Thank you, Dr. Carey. Superintendent's report and recommendations.
Yes, ma'am, Chair, members of the board, thank you for this work session today. We have Steph and I have been working on being proactive and trying to look into certain items. One of the items that we're looking at is the streaming of board meetings. Mr. Mark Allen, our Director of Technology, will provide some information regarding the logistics of doing that, and once he delivers that information and seeks input from board members, we feel like we can proceed in a structured, thoughtful manner. Mr. Allen?
Thank you. Yeah, so I was gonna present a couple of things here. One maybe more, I just had some notes and I'll just talk a little bit. Example, you can see it, it's not very good, so. We need to probably address this one. So, I just wanted to give a little bit of context for where we are with this room. Several years ago, this was 2018, 2019, I believe, that we sort of upgraded this room. It sort of fallen into a state of kind of in-between, I think some things were working and some things weren't. So, there was an old video system in here, for example, and some cameras and things like that that didn't work. So, that we removed that, we reset the audio system here. The exception is microphone, which, again, you've really got to get in close to have it work. With the exception, this microphone works pretty well. The one big thing we didn't address then for microphones, and I'll come back to that, that these mics on the board. But again, we put the protectors in and all kinds of things. One of the things we did about timing was we, there isn't audio recording device in that rack. We got that at the time. That was really the sort of assist or the purple. But she's very good at keeping up with it. Actually, I had worked on the meetings from our last month, just to see how much details were really there. There's a tremendous amount of stuff in there, so she does a great job of keeping up with that on her own. And so, we've never really had the use for that. It wasn't terribly expensive, so it's something that's built in. But this doesn't need to be locked. So, with some of that capability in mind, going forward, I know that there's, you know, topics in talking, this discussion is sort of about streaming, video streaming laws. I just want to get some expectations or give some goals that you had for that. There's a lot of different players in that, many different things we could do, but just sort of get some feedback on what you were thinking. What you had.
So, I'll start, because I was the one that presented the motion. But really, I think it's just, it would be beneficial to those that couldn't make the meetings at certain times or whatever. I know the Board of County Supervisors, they, they livestream it on YouTube and then you can go back and re-watch it. I also think that would be beneficial to current and future board members as well, to discuss, to talk about, you know, what discussions happened on board or. So, I think just having that record there beyond just the minutes provides more clarity to the community as well.
Okay, so the archive would be part of that. I was looking at what I wanted to get to. So, you, you're beginning, you would want to archive this sort of thing and have it for an extended period of time, not just a brief period of time? It's something that you would want us to be able to refer to?
Ideally, I think that would be better, just so that way if there's discussion about something this year and the next year, something happens, we can refer back and be like, okay, this is what was said, this was the questions that were asked. And I think it would just be.
So, is there, is there a requirement, so this room, I talked about this room, there's some things that you have done in the past. The board has done in the past, it's been built and gone out to schools and visited. And typically, those aren't work sessions, those are regular sessions that are, that are going on. But would that be something that you were interested in streaming as well? That adds a level of complexity. This room is one thing. As soon as we take it on the road, we gotta deal with audio and video at that point, but it's not saying it's not possible. It's just, it's a big chunk, but I just want to get a quick look as to what you're thinking.
I think ideally, long-term, would be, would be something we would want to consider, but I don't know if it's something we need to press now. You know, this room in particular is probably where most of the meetings will be held anyway. So, being able to have the bulk of them at least for a period of time. On the road per se, not necessarily something that we would have to do.
Right, and so, and just to be clear, you're thinking about streaming them and not sort of live and recording them and posting them later? This is a live stream, there wouldn't be any interactivity from the public in that stream?
I, I don't know that that would be necessary. I think that if there's a pressing issue, you know, we've seen it before, parents do show up, teachers do show up. And so, I don't know that it would be necessary, but, you know.
Necessary, I just want to clarify, it wouldn't be necessary for them to have to be able to participate from remote?
That would be my thinking, yes. At least for, for now, I mean, obviously, we don't know what's coming down the pike. But I think for now, bare bones, I think would be beneficial, because we can start it sooner and it's things that can evolve later.
Okay, so, so bare bones, so when you say bare bones, immediately, so when I think about doing this, I'm thinking about capturing here what's on the screen, as well as this position, as well as your position and your audio. Is that correct? That's sort of the baseline for that? So, it's really three different things going on, right?
Right.
So, it's not just one camera is what it is here? I'm trying, I'm trying to get your definition of bare bones, you said bare bones, I want to make sure. Your definition of bare bones, my definition of bare bones, that's where I'm going with that.
I guess it would depend on, is the, with the camera, recording device, be able to be moved? Because then that can be something, that could be one camera or.
Yeah, that's the other considerations, like, as soon as we, we introduce something that's operated, then we need an operator.
Right.
So, we have to consider that part, and we have to consider sort of a multi-flow. I talked to the county about how they, how they do that, they actually operate theirs remotely, believe I did. So, they turn it on and that's the way to do it, because they actually accommodate different boards. Now, they just built that building and it's kind of built in, and he's got all the different system for that. He's been doing it on Zoom, he said it's terrible, and so they went back and they're doing it a different way. There's lots of ways to do that. Okay, so, so.
And, I mean, if we're talking bare bones, I don't necessarily think that we need the screen itself recorded the whole time either, because that, that's accessible online, anybody can pull that up and look at it.
Okay, so the presentations themselves, we can just not, we wouldn't have to show that?
I, I don't think so, I don't know what you're talking about.
I don't think we do, because the agendas are posted and you can easily follow along if you want to view what's, what's happening.
Sure, okay.
One of the, what I've seen a model two of a lot of sports is you have, the lecture will be over here in the middle. So, you have a shot at the crowd and you have a shot at the speaker. And then you would have a back shot of the board. So, it would just be a minimal of two. And that seemed to be pretty efficient and.
So, then this, this would move, what's your thinking?
In the center, that way you can cover the crowd.
So, two positions, okay. All right, so, okay, so let me, no. Let me talk a little bit about those microphones very quickly, I'm sorry to take your guys' time. The, the microphones, they're coupled, they're, they're touchy. Those are designed to, to speak into, right? You can tell right away that when I speak into this, you can hear it through the, through the speakers. When you don't speak into it, it, it won't capture it very well. It's not going to pick it up, it's designed to do that. You see them in, in Congress or in court, where they've really got the thing in their face, and if they don't use it that way, it's not going to work very well. So, that's going to be something that, that you're gonna have to think about. There's also the mute button, so if you have any sort of sidebars, could potentially pick it up. Now, they're not as sensitive as I just said, but there are different styles of microphones. There's things that can be done in ceiling, there's all kinds of things to wire it differently. I don't know if we want to get that advanced, but it is something that I passed on last time, because those microphones are, they weren't bad at the time, they're just, they're just not the best. So, I throw that out there, it's just something for you to consider. This is obviously gonna have to be fixed, because it just doesn't, it doesn't do what it needs to do. The only other thing that I, I think the biggest thing I had, I had a bunch of notes that I'd taken, but I know off the top of my head, accessibility is something that I'm not sure, I've seen a lot of folks do very well. You see, at the state level and bigger jurisdictions, they'll do things in sign language, they'll do things in subtitles, they'll do all kinds of things to make it more accessible. Our option there, there are some glintery. We can do it, but it's not great. And I spoke to the county, lots of people, they just use that, it's okay, but it's not great. I don't even know that it meets the qualifications for doing it, for being compliant. One of the things that concerns us about it, the technology and the side of houses, we, we had an issue, let's say four or five years ago, where someone nationally started suing school systems and their websites, because we weren't compliant. We ended up going backwards to try to do that now. It's extremely difficult to do sometimes, but we do it, we have to do it. So, it is a consideration, and I'm not suggesting that I'm a lawyer, or that I know all this stuff. I just know that I do see big jurisdictions doing it, I don't see a lot of little folks doing it, and I don't think the law provides for that. So, I think we need to at least investigate that and talk and say, is it something that we need to consider? So, that is a consideration on my part, when we keep this around the issue. But it sounds like, unless you have, I'm available for questions as well. I just wanted to make sure, in the building we talked about, we talked about archiving. I think it answered a lot of my questions, I just wanted to get a sense as to what you were thinking and that sort of things. We're confined to this room, more or less, we might move this, try to do something with the cameras this way. And look at streaming it to archive it online for a particular period of time. Is that close?
Yeah.
Again, I think that the considerations will be that, you know, there are going to be limitations to some of it audio-wise. The audio is always tricky, people think video is hard, video's not hard, it's audio that's hard. So, anything else, any other questions, I can get back to you. I'm gonna have to talk to a couple of different people to see, you know, what the sweet spot is on this.
Raw media. Raw media, that way it's, how is it gonna be archived, is it Blu-ray or? Are we gonna depend on?
I, I don't know that I would have physical media, they would probably kick it out as like a big floor file, like a video file that we can just archive off. We probably wouldn't have anything physical other than our server is back there or something like that.
It's like degradation or somebody says, well, that's not what was said and it's been edited or?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, at that point, sure, I don't know. I don't know how to answer questions like that. I know Adobe's building some of the stuff in their software now, that is going to detect those sorts of things. So, because there's voice, all kinds of things that you can do with voice, there's things that you can do to VAS. So, and files are gonna be available. I don't anticipate us putting that file out, I mean, unless you guys want to do that, they can download them for some reason. If you're comfortable with just streaming it, there wouldn't be a, a way to do that. I suppose you could download it yourself and do it. You can rip it from YouTube and edit it if you wanted to, but we can do that with anything, you know? I don't know. Any questions, anything else for right now?
I think that gives you a good start.
Okay, let me see if I can get some stuff together, and, I mean, I have a good idea about this. We're doing some things in the schools that, that we do have some, some good equipment around. There might be some things that, you know, we just have to add a little bit to make it happen. We've got to make it so that the staff here, and I'm not sure, I'll talk to Laura and see what our staffing situation, how do we, how do we run this sort of thing, how do we make sure it works, at least here, so. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Next item on the report is the supplemental appropriations for FY 2022. Again, this is information that's being presented for action on February 7th, a week from today, at that board meeting. There are two items that Mr. Honaker will be going over, an operating fund for Virginia Tiered Systems of Support, a school security grant, followed up by the ESER Fund with Coronavirus in State, local fiscal recovery fund, and the American Rescue Plan. And he will be presenting those pieces and attached is also supporting information. Mr. Honaker, thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Snead, members of the board. I'm here to present information for supplemental appropriations for that SIR two budget. Again, this would be the operating fund and the ESER fund. As Dr. Snead said, I did attach the awards, the grants, and the information pertaining to those. So, does anyone have any questions concerning those materials that I've brought?
I had one, just because, you know, ESER was a big thing, was wondering, are there any, like, requirements that the school has from the federal government in order to obtain or retain the grants?
For this particular grant, which is the HVAC grant, there is a requirement that we match the funds. Normally, that would come from your local funds, with most any match, but cause of the, I guess I'll say the amounts of these grants, they are allowing us to match that with other federal funds. So, the plan is currently, again, the money is kind of flowing in and out of these, these grants. We just got, recently got another grant this week that we're looking for. So, sometimes we have to move the, move different items from different funds from one grant to the other, depending on what that grant specifies. So, with that being said, what we are planning to do to match this HVAC grant is to get these funds from the ESER three grant. And again, some of that is coming from the ESER three set aside that we just received. So, maybe it's a little complex, but again, that's what we're, what we're planning to do to come up with a local match. The match, I won't call it locally, because this type of deal happens.
And there's no policy that we have to, you know, present in order to, I mean, obviously, we have to use the grants for what they're for?
Well, with any grant, we have to submit the grant to the Department of Education, and they have to approve that, which we have done, and they've approved the items that we have submitted to them. That's always, and again, and if we make any adjustments to any of these grants, we have to go back through the Department of Education to make any changes we need to make to the grant, so. I hope that answers your question.
Well, and to add to that too, the grants don't just show up and we guess. There's a lot of guidance and guidance at meetings. Mr. Honaker's attended a lot of meetings regarding the guidance on how to move and maneuver through the grants, as well as I, as a superintendent, have had countless meetings with the state superintendent at the time about how we would move and maneuver through these grants. And so, there, to answer your question, yes, there, there are guidelines and stipulations. And so, once we get the original guidelines and stipulations for one grant, then I believe there are afterthoughts on other grants that come down from the federal government, and then we try to see, well, how can we monitor and adjust, given all of the nuances of each grant, in order to maximize our efficiencies? Thus, Mr. Honaker eloquently stating, with the $953,573 that we would need to match with the HVAC replacement improvement grant, rather than go locally, we went with another grant. And so, that really saves us on the local side.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sarver, and he's here for a declaration of surplus property. He's supplied two, two items that, that he can obviously explain and better knows their condition than I, so I'll hand the floor over to you, Mr. Sarver.
Good evening, ma'am, Chair, Dr. Snead, members of the board. I'm coming to see you to present a commission of our two vehicles and ingredients that are surplus property. The first is a 2012 international school bus to keep the very similar condition. The engine has failed on it, and it costs four tax value plus four hundred. The second item is a maintenance vehicle. It has served us well over the years, but it has reached the point where it is no longer cost effective. Asking for a declaration of surplus property, so that we can expose that as trade code. Any questions?
Is that something we could take here at time?
It, it pleases the board, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we take Mr. Sarver's extra property, surplus property recommendations.
A second? All right, I would favor by saying aye. Thank you, Carey. Thank you, Mr. Sarver.
Thank you, Mr. Sarver, thank you, board, for your support of that recommendation and subsequent action. That takes us to information, school facilities projects update. Always enjoy seeing and hearing and having this report to the board. Mr. Arnold keeps us up to date on a daily basis, and he's reporting to the public exactly what he's been up to.
Thank you, Dr. Snead, and Chair, members of the board. Most of these projects listed here were done over the last couple of months, during Christmas, right? But the first one is an exception. This is about the biggest thing I've been involved with here in my ten years of doing North County Public Schools. This is the Ford Barbara Edition. Along the way, the project to both the new members, it's a six classroom edition. A goal to improve security and create a new brand. People took it all down, we're on this stage. And I'm back into the drawing board, it's hard, it's not too difficult. So, it works slightly, that's hard. And the design work is hard to do with the project, and we start the purging process, including the site management, which is kind of good. But I don't want to take so long, so I look back and start with that process, I hope this is six, and it's a good one. So, we're ready to afford. Along with the building, for it to have this available, and that would be the contract, and select one. And with that in mind, we need to advertise for it to be available, and plans will be available to contractors on our website, and for the architects, it'll start tomorrow. And we said that they take proof definitely from the fourth, so all goes well with those companies, which should have the recommendation of the board at this point. Moving on, North County High School, we completed the installation of the building, our back in the art room. And it was originally thought to be a classroom, teacher to other room, but the building, her office up, we were able to put some shelves around it and install it, keep it stored in the library. We're at Sports Center, our tractor came in, and we finished our four. Good show. We had postponed for a year because of COVID, now we need to ask those, especially, to take care of it. Five Foot Elementary, we have water heater that's in pretty rough shape, and we have to replace that. We have an exact same model water heater installed in Unionville, and all that's not in the standard shape as well, but we will replace that within a year. We have a project to install security vestibles in three schools, Five Foot, North Elementary, and Unionville. And all the work for that has been completed, and that was funded by the grant that was required, and that might be in place here, September 31st. There are some storefront materials that will come in, on Middle to Lake March and, mm, it's given. When those come in, we'll finish the job, and we know we're able to build for the rest of the year. Right here at T, we had a rooms and conference room that still have the original white-blue, very thin carpeting from back in 2006, and it was building was last repot, and it's time they can replace it, because it was great. Also had two sections of sidewalk, and the entry groups had come up and pitched the sidewalks up, and we were safe, to replace those sections of the bottom. In Unionville, we did a fairly major renovation of the first grade classrooms. We took out all of the old radiators that were up, walls on two sides of each classroom. And we had asbestos paper on that, so we had to have that disposed of properly. Then we replaced all countertops with paper, and that was, so we're in a shape now. We hope to do a similar project in Unionville within the year. Last but not least, the Prospect Heights, in the Chiltwater Street, two large valves, one of which had failed completely, and the other was leaking, so we went ahead and replaced both valves when we were ready. Any questions or comments?
You've been a very busy man, Mr. Arnold.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's all good.
As always, thank you, Mr. Arnold, and Stan. Like to, at this point, look at proposed revisions. Again, this is for information with possible action on February 7th. Presentation of proposed revisions to the 2021-22 school calendar. And those recommendations will be presented. Fortunately, since we have, since we have created these revisions, we've not missed any other days. We've come close. But anyway, I'd like to have Ms. Dawson, if she doesn't mind, please approach the podium and go over the review of the revision, review of the revision.
Good evening, Chair, Dr. Snead, members of the board. Promise, don't have COVID, there we work, so here I am. So, we are bringing the following adjustments to you for consideration. As Dr. Snead said, take those, we haven't encountered any inclement weather that has closed our facilities, and I'm praying that we don't anymore this winter season, come on spring. So, in order to make up, we need to make up two of the days out of those that we have missed in order to meet all the requirements as established by the standards of quality in the Department of Education. So, to do that, we are asking the board to utilize February 21st as a makeup day, and that was on the original calendar as a makeup day anyway, so that's not really a change. What we are asking, that the last day of school, which was slated to be May 19th, that be moved over one day to May 20th, it would still be an early dismissal day, and then teachers would wrap up on the 23rd. So, doing this, we don't have to adjust our grading periods of your teacher conferences, we don't have to touch spring break. We are excited that you guys wanted to keep graduation on the 14th, and that is still there. So, we kind of get the best of all worlds, we feel like. Any questions I can answer? Ms. Anderson and Ms. Honaker are here as well, if you've got questions about instruction.
I had a question about the asynchronous learning days. Are they considered instructional days?
They are.
They are, okay.
Yes. Yeah, I think that was one of the comments that was going around, is like, take those and make those makeup days, but they're already considered in the 180 days, so we had to look beyond that.
And, and Ms. Dawson, if I'm correct, we have six. On November 21st, we added four built in, and then that, that, well, for a total of six asynchronous days, and so, we're allowed 10 unscheduled asynchronous days, and we have four unscheduled asynchronous days with which to work. Is that correct? Yes, and so, that could be, under code, which was developed, well, guidelines, which we developed this past year, COVID from the State Department. If we have an inclement weather day, and we have power in our homes, our constituents have power in their homes, and if Ms. Blair is able to provide food service, then we can count the asynchronous day on that snow day. And so, those are the metrics by which we need to understand and look at. We were prepared, you know, just for a trial run, on one of the days we missed, we looked at and we said, hey, okay, today, does everyone have power? And the answer was yes. And could we have supplied food at a central location, which in this point, I think in our pilot model, was Unionville Elementary School? So, we did a little dry run in our, in our minds and, and practiced, and we saw that we could fulfill that obligation should this happen. So, certainly, we would not be able to provide an asynchronous day of instruction should we have had, have the cataclysmic snowfall that we had in the beginning that broke all of my pine trees. So, anyway, I'll just put it that way.
And then my last question, is there anything in place should we have another snow day?
So, in the code, it says that you have to make up the first five, and then you have to make up a one. to make up one, every other one after that. So you can see February twenty-one makeup, then the tenth not made up, then the eighteenth we would, we're asking to make that up. So if we miss another day and we're not able to utilize the asynchronous learning model, then we do have that one day to play with. If we were to have days beyond that, we'd have to come back to the board and, and ask, you know, how do you want us to, to look at making this up? But we're keeping our fingers crossed. Spring is around the corner. I heard it's going to be sixty degrees someday this week. So.
Yes.
No more snow. No more ice.
What was the other, Dr. Snead, what was the other, it was power, food, and what was the other criteria for the asynchronous?
Essentially, the power and being able to offer the lunch. Yes, because we already have our, we already have our modality in place with our one-to-one device ratio. You'd have to have that too.
Yes. And it has to be for all students.
Yes. So if a portion of the county is out, we can't offer the asynchronous day. But not to confuse everyone, and Mr. Berry can correct me, we can have one central location for food pickup. So when I mentioned Unionville Elementary School, we were prepared for that. So yes, what that does mean, if you're in the Gordon Barber area and the only place to get your food would be in Unionville, then that's, then that's how that is that day. Is that correct, Mr. Berry?
Yes, and we're fortunate that Ms. Blair lives down five twenty-two, so she has an easy route to get to Unionville, and that is a central location.
Thank you.
Other questions? Can you answer?
All right. Thank, thank you, Ms. Dawson and members of the board. All right. That brings us up to our health committee update. Just a little bit of history or context revisiting. We, I think it was, there's a lot going on. At one of our board meetings, I believe the last board meeting, I believe was on a Thursday, there was a passage of a resolution which would make masks optional. And so with that being said, the board directed me and staff to look at the fee, the possible feasibility of N ninety-five masks and the test to stay program. And so with that being said, we thought, okay, well, we'll, we'll delve into those two items and just come up with a report. So this is just information only. And so the health committee chair people, Ms. Ailer and Ms. Dawson, are here, ready to present the information that they gleaned and interpreted and, and they're willing to share it today. And also, I will also say, this is something that the state superintendents have, the state superintendent had, had shared and given guidance on as well, you know, early on as well, so.
Yes. Both of these topics, probably in the last six, eight months, we've been monitoring them, but we're happy to bring the information that we have in our recommendation to the board. So again, as Dr. Snead said, the two items that he requested that we look into were the test to stay and the N ninety-five mask for staff. So what is the test to stay? Really what that is, is if a student is deemed in close contact, whether that be at school or at a birthday party, then this would allow them to receive tests. And when they negative test and asymptomatic, I want to go kind of through the list of that, they could remain in-person learning versus the historic quarantine, which would be at home for a period of time. So who's eligible? Right now, they are recommending that only students who meet the criteria are eligible for test to stay. Again, you have to be asymptomatic, close contact at onset. Again, the individuals considered a close contact occurring at school, school-sponsored extracurricular activity, bus, community, et cetera. They're not up to date on their vaccines. So this is something that we are looking into as well. The VDH and the CDC are both stating that eligible individuals who have not received their booster are not considered to be fully vaccinated. So we're trying to get more information on that as well, because there's certain age brackets that aren't eligible. The, one of the key pieces to this is that the individual is willing and able to wear a well-fitting mask while at school during the entire quarantine period, except during eating and drinking. And I'll get into kind of what that means as well. And that they remain asymptomatic throughout the ten days. Again, it's still a ten-day period. It's just kind of different how it looks whether they're in the classroom or not. Their parent has to sign a consent form, and there can't be any special circumstances, for example, an uncontrolled outbreak. And I think that's important because right now, the Virginia Department of Health is no longer individually contact tracing. They are doing more of the, the outbreak, you know, if there's a cluster of people. So what are the requirements? The student has to wear a well-fitting mask at all times, except when eating and drinking, for ten days following the exposure. So a student that's exposed, let's say on a Sunday, that's considered day zero. So beginning on Monday, they have to wear a well-fitting mask for ten days. The first five days are going to be in school. So that means that they have to submit to a test. And there are three options for administering the test. The first option is for the student to do that test the morning of. So one Monday, they would get up, they would have a proctor test. So that's another key piece. Proctor means they have to have internet accessibility and they have to be with their proctor and they have to see everything. And so that's for five days. And that's every morning. The second option is the day before, after seven PM. They can do the same thing. They can go proctor test, again, after seven PM. And then the third option is that with schools that have capacity, they can administer the test. So this would be for students that do not have to ride the school bus. Their parent could bring them in. Unfortunately, this is not an option that we feel we have the capacity. We just don't have the staff. Our sick rooms are within the school building. So these students would have to be, they would have to go all the way through the school building in order to be tested. And then if they are positive, then they have to be taken back out through, through the school building. So we don't feel that that is an option for us. Let's see. The student monitors for symptoms for ten days. So again, the first five days, they're taking a test to be in school. On day six and seven, that's a weekend, they don't have to test, but they're still required to quarantine at home. And then the next three days, they would again have to have a test in order to be allowed back in school. I want to take you back up though to the first bullet where it says the well-fitting mask. That's really important because they have to keep their mask on at all times unless they're eating or drinking. And the guideline says that when they're eating or drinking, they can't be, they have to be further away than six feet. So they would have to be sitting away from everybody else while they're eating and drinking. So I just think that's important to have on there as well. Any questions about this piece so far?
I came up with two. What the purpose of test to stay would serve without VDH contact tracing? That was the first.
Well, so I'm going to get to, can I answer that?
Yeah.
I think I'll answer that one.
And then who would be proctoring the tests?
So the tests are proctored through, I believe, the company, so the, the BioMax. It's a home test kit, so it has instructions. So it has, that has a proctor.
Okay.
So we thought it was important to put on here what is defined as a well-fitting mask. They rarely cite two important ways. Make sure your mask fits snugly against your face. Gaps can let air with respiratory droplets leak out and around the edges. And pick a mask with layers to keep your respiratory droplets in and others out. And so I included the link to the CDC and it just kind of gives a graphic. We've also included this in our guidance document. That's on our website for parents or students that might have questions about what is a well-fitting mask. The graphic's really good and it goes into a lot more detail. So giving this a lot of thought and consideration, and like I said, we have been going over this for months now. We do not recommend the health committee to use the test to stay option, and it's for the following reasons. Because masks are optional, that has taken two pieces of our mitigation plan away. It's taken the mask piece away and it's also taken the VDH exception of the three feet physical distancing in classrooms. So students who were seated at least three feet apart, if they were both wearing a mask, if they were considered a close contact, they didn't have to quarantine. It was an exception. But taking a mask and making that optional, that takes that away. And as we know, a lot of our classrooms, that three-foot just can't be maintained. And additionally, we are no longer contact tracing at the individual level. We do, however, recommend the following, that staff, we still encourage staff and students to stay home. And this is why I said, I'm really, I'm okay. When they're sick, seeking care and testing as appropriate. And I would say, the majority of our staff and students, they do that. And they call and they ask questions. And they have done a phenomenal job in this two years that we have been fighting COVID. Continue washing their hands frequently. I think that's a practice we should all have all the time. Physical distancing as much as possible and keep pushing the vaccination for those that wish to have it. So that's where we are with the test to stay. Any questions I can answer?
The thing I would add to that though is the test to stay option in the pilot program was designed prior to Virginia Department of Health saying, we're not going to do the individual contact tracing. We're going to just concentrate on outbreaks, which is what they used to do in working with us at any time when we had, say, an outbreak of flu or chickenpox or whatever.
All right. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the N ninety-five masks. So again, during the meeting on the twentieth, you requested that the health committee look into N ninety-five masks for staff. So immediately, we as a committee reached out to April Auger, who's the population health coordinator, and Kathy Hatter, who's our local health and emergency coordinator at Virginia Department of Health. I say this every time I mention Department of Health, they have been phenomenal through the entire two years. Whenever we called, we did, if they don't answer right away, they call us back right away. They have, they've just been, they're very talented staff and they have been phenomenal. So we reached out to them to ask some questions about the N ninety-five masks. So in their guidance, they wanted us to say there were some key points that we need to look at and consider. One is, does this board believe that the workplace hazards require you as the employer to provide the N ninety-five masks? And if yes, what are, what level of masks? Or provide masks and then what level of masks? If this board believes that the N ninety-five masks are what is necessary for your staff, then a respiratory protection program is required by OSHA, which puts in place, it's actually, they sent me a link template. It's quite, as Kathy, this is actually Kathy Hatter's quote, that coming together and meeting all the requirements outlined by OSHA is quite an undertaking. And the reason for the having to use, to develop the plan is because when, as an employer, you say, we're going to provide these, that assumes liability. So with that, then you have to go through all the steps to make sure that you put the plan in place for it. So some of the requirements for providing the N ninety-fives. The first is completing the respiratory protection plan required by OSHA. Every employee who's interested would then have to complete a medical questionnaire slash evaluation. So you would have to hire someone who, they give some guidelines as to what the background for that individual has to be in actually studying upfront, just through questionnaire, are you even eligible to be fit at three N ninety-five masks? It asks a lot about medical history. It asks a lot about medical conditions. It asks a lot about medication. It asks a lot about facial hair, things like that. Then you have to purchase the equipment for the fit testing. And when I talked to April and Kathy, they both said that the equipment to do the fit testing is quite expensive. You have to train all your trainers to do the fit testing. And then every fit tested employee that's going to be fit tested, it's about a thirty-minute process to get them fit tested, if they're cleared by the medical evaluation to actually be fit tested. And then, of course, purchasing the N ninety-five masks if they're available. So the health committee's recommendation, and I will say, in talking with both Kathy and April, one thing that they definitely asked, when I was asking about the N ninety-fives, when the health committee was asking for additional clarification, they also, both of them also stated the KN ninety-five mask is also a great option. It's a, it's a higher quality mask, but it doesn't have to be fit tested. And so based on the guidance from Department of Health, the health committee recommends providing five KN ninety-five masks for each interested employee. And again, Ms. Hatter states that the CDC recommendation of higher quality masks without requiring fit testing is what the KN ninety-five is. And the CDC continues to recommend the N ninety-five masks be reserved for healthcare workers. And with the KN ninety-fives, I will say, we as the school division prior to January twentieth, had actually ordered a huge amount of KN ninety-five masks to offer to our employees. So we actually have quite a large supply. We need to order some more, but we had quite a large supply here already. And we often, we have written it as five because we do, it can be reused. And there's a whole, it's actually not a complicated process.
It's not.
Making it, you just have to put it in a paper bag.
We can blood sit for twenty-four hours.
And then it's clean to wear again. And so if we did five, it would be one for each day of the week. So it would actually be seven days before they wore again. Any questions?
No, I don't have any. I know the government also was issuing, I think, if you're interested, there's a website you can go to to get five free N ninety-five masks as well.
I think they're going to distribute those to the health departments, if I was reading that correctly. So we will definitely reach back out to April and make sure that we are on the list. We've had the health department actually deliver how many cases, how many, you know, how many cases of adult and youth masks that they've had. And so we've got them, and we've been finding out as quickly as we can for COVID, we've been setting them up.
And the availability of KN ninety-five masks was much greater than for N ninety-five.
Yeah.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ailer, Ms. Dawson. Appreciate you. That concludes the superintendent's reports and recommendations until February seventh. And hand over the mic to Ms. Barham from Communications.
Okay. The February seventh agenda, that meeting will take place here starting at seven. Nothing surprising on there. We will have a guest speaker come to talk about the charters of freedom. Not sure if you're aware of that project with the, is it the James Madison Museum? I believe it's in partnership with that.
Yes, and she will go over an exciting opportunity that we're already in the middle of here in Orange, and that is to be able to present the Declaration of the constitutional rights. And I believe for Orange, we're also able to add the Emancipation Proclamation, I do believe. But the presenter will have much more clarity on that than I. So I'm excited. Thank you.
And then you'll see just action on the items that were presented tonight. I will update it to take off Mr. Sarver's surplus property. And I believe Ms. Page has attended her first prep meeting, so she will have a prep meeting report. So that takes care of that agenda. So we've got February's calendar. It's busy, but it's not busy. It looks like we could potentially have meetings every Monday because the budget time is starting. Um, it looks like we could potentially have meetings every Monday because the budget, uh, time is starting. So we'll give you more details on budget meetings at the February seventh meeting. Um, but just hold those extra Mondays, the fourteenth and the twenty-first, just in case. Um, so we may have some extra sessions. And then, um, there's a governor's school meeting on the seventeenth and another prep meeting on the twenty-third. And then for, uh, March, we have school board meeting at, um, on the seventh at seven. And the work session that month is moved up a week because spring break is the last week of March. And then I have another prep meeting. That may be incorrect. I'll have to check, I'm not sure if we're that frequent. It may have been, I use a template and it may have copied over by accident. So I'll double-check that one. So I think that's, that's all. If you ever have any questions about events, um, in between meetings, just let me know and I'll find out when I can for you.
Pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Orange County School Board convene a closed meeting for the following. Discussion of personnel or the performance of a division employee as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia. Resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Okay.
I'll look for most hanging on.
All right.
Thank you.